Our second meeting of April and let's get going.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach on Tuesday, April 20th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Overall call, Councilmember Delory.
Present.
Councilmember Mandell.
Present.
Councilmember Trustin.
Present.
Vice President McGinnis.
Present.
President Bendo.
Present.
Let the record indicate the President, Subcity Manager Donna Gaden, and Deputy Corporation Counsel Richard Barrios would have a salute to the flag.
Councilman Delory has a flag behind him, so how about you lead us tonight?
Okay, President Bendo.
Okay.
Okay, hands over your hearts. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks, Mike. So why don't we start with the city manager's report?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We have a five-minute report from Police Commissioner Walsh.
Hello, everybody. Can you guys see me? I don't know if you can, Dave.
No, we can hear you, we can't see you.
Right now, try it now.
I'm working on it. Sorry about the delay there. Hi, everybody.
There you go.
Good to see everybody. So a quick report today, just very quickly on today's events. We had a situation in the city today where there was a shooting that took place, actually an active shooter that took place over in West Hempstead today. It turned out that the suspect in that shooter, who has been arrested, was a resident of Long Beach. And we had as a preemptive caution, had the schools lock all the children in and things of that nature. So we wanted to make sure that they were safe. I was in contact with the school superintendent and the school presidents, uh, school principals, and we coordinated that. And we had officers at this gentleman's residence and as well as his family. And a lot of cooperation from a lot of people around the city, sending us text messages, information, calling the station house, providing information. It turns out that that individual wound up being arrested in Hempstead without incident, to add anything worse to the tragedy that already took place. With regard to other news, I would want to, I do want to point out some fantastic work that was done by members of the police department. Last week, we had an officer respond to a residence home in Long Beach. It was an 85-year-old woman who, she actually thought that she was scammed for a driver's license. She had mailed a check for $130 off to an address, and she never got her license in the mail. So Officer Ang responded to the location. And it turns out that what she actually paid for was the registration on her car. He took her out to her car and showed her her car and said, this is what you paid for. And then Officer Ang went back inside, sat down with the woman, got on her computer with her, and proceeded to apply for her driver's license with her because she didn't understand how to actually do that online and wasn't able to get to motor vehicle. So it was just a really great example of fantastic work and community service provided by our, our members of our police department. We also had one of our specials, Bobby Weaver, observed an elderly woman crossing the street on Park Avenue, a light turned green, and all the cars started coming at the woman. And he, he proceeded to immediately take his car and block the street so that none of the cars can come. And the woman was able to safely cross. And I got some emails about that, about how nice that that was. So it really is nice to see our officers stepping out in front. With regard to our enforcement activities and things of that nature, we are, our specials wrote in the last 30 days, 1,658 parking tickets. Our police officers wrote 402 parking tickets, as well as 60, 60 code violations on the Ocean Beach Park for various things as skateboards, dogs on the Ocean Beach Park and on the boardwalk, and an assortment of other things, as well as an additional 250 parking summoners. So the, the message is starting to get out, and we're seeing less and less dogs out there. We are very well aware of the complaints of people riding their bicycles, perhaps a little bit too fast, or some electric bicycles. And we're working on ways, and we're in very much anticipation of the summer specials that we will be hiring very shortly. We will be hiring almost 40 of them, and we will be placing additional specials this year at the rec center to replace the, the un-uniformed security that's there right now with uniformed special officers to enhance that security and try and bring a different level of safety and community outreach there as well. Any questions from the board, shooters from the council or anything? I'm more than happy to answer it at this time. I'm trying to be sensitive to the fact that you have a large agenda. Any questions at all? Okay, great.
Thank you, Commissioner. The next person who'll speak is from Public Works, Thomas Kaner, Tommy Kaner.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, good evening, everyone. I have the pleasure to announce in this crazy world something nice that went on today. Our superintendent of sanitation, Devin Parker, thanks to his quick action and thinking, there was a situation today in the West Elm area. One of the sanitation drivers was doing his regular pickup. He picked up the garbage, threw it in the truck. Somebody must have thrown something out that was still on fire. Obviously, they, they didn't know that. They threw it in the truck and started to proceed down the road. The driver quickly saw that there was smoke coming from the back of the truck, immediately called Superintendent Devin Parker. He advised the driver to call the fire department. Devin responded to the scene within minutes. When he opened up the back of the truck, he saw flames. So he instructed the driver to dump the load of garbage on the street immediately to get the truck out of there. So anybody that knows anything about hydraulics in the back of those trucks is like a 100-gallon tank of hydraulic fluid, and it's just a rubber hose. That hose could have went on fire and dumped all of that fluid into the back of the truck, and we would have lost it. The truck is approximately $270,000. It's one of our new trucks. And again, thanks to Devin's quick response and quick thinking, he was able to save the truck. No damage to anybody's private property, any other city property, and most of all, nobody was hurt. Devin also proceeded to shut the street down. And with one, within one hour, he was able to have the highway department respond and remove all of the debris, and then have a street sweeper come through and clean up like it was never there. So kudos to Devin. I take my hat off to you. He's doing a great job and things like that is, this is what we need to do. And I can't explain how his quicks action saved that truck because we've had this situation before, and we did lose a truck one time due to it. So Devin, we take our hat off to you, and we salute you, buddy. Great job.
City Manager Gaden, can I add one thing to my report?
Yes.
Thank you. I just really want to say very quickly that the verdict came in today for the, in the George Floyd murder trial, which was guilty on all charges. I just want to give the city a sense of calm and peace that we've been in contact, I've been in direct contact with our intelligence section over in the Nassau County Police Department, as well as other agencies. There are really no protests planned. Everything seems to be very quiet here in Long Island, in the city. I've been in touch with numerous people throughout the city as well who have sort of contacts throughout the city to see, to make sure that nothing is percolating. So everything seems to be fine. Our offices are on heightened alert, just in case anything does percolate up where people would like to exercise their right to free speech. But it looks like right now everything is, is quiet and well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody in the police department because we have been talking about this for the last couple of weeks and watching the news from the day that it, it went to the jury to make sure that everything stays calm. So thank you very much. The next speaker will be Monique from Community Development. Monique? Did we lose her? No, there she is. Okay, Monique.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you. I wanted to touch base about CDBG and to give a brief overview of some of the changes and to continue the process of transparency and understanding Community Development, CDBG. So I wanted to talk specifically about the 45th budget that we talked about as an example. We're moving forward with public service, and that's any service and funds that we get from CDBG to provide a public service to the community. And if we look at the 45th budget that we talked about last week, there was, there was some confusion about the funds and it being allocated. So I wanted to talk about previously, the city, under Community Development, using CDB funds, has provided more than what was required for public service. So for example, if we looked at that 45th budget, you would see $60,000 of that went to public service. That is not actually what we are going to do moving forward because it's not allowed. Only 15% is supposed to be used towards public service. So we have to monitor the amount of public service in the funds in regards to the funds of CDBG funds that we are using. There was a lot of talk about the funds, and I received a lot of phone calls about the fact that MLK did not receive funds. That is actually untrue. Funds for that 45th budget, although it didn't say MLK line, funds were used to provide services for the, at the MLK Center, to MLK Inc., and in the access of $40,000. So if you look on that budget line, you will see $20,000 was for youth employment training. Those funds was used for the security guards that has been deemed very necessary by the chairperson of MLK. And then another amount of $20,000 was used for the senior services there. So it brings up to my point of what we're doing moving forward. We're changing project titles to focus more on the services and the needs and the target population and not specific individuals. We at, we as a city has a high responsibility and accountability when it comes to these community development funds, where we need to actually identify the needs. We need to show who serviced, who were serviced and the benefit and report back. So there's a lot of misconception of these funds. These are not free funds. It is in form of a grant because it's not considered program income. It's not part of our operational budget, but it's actually funds that the city has to be reimbursed for. So I wanted to be very transparent, meaning that the city has to spend the money first, and providing that requirements were met, that the projects were fulfilled, individual needs, and there's some type of measurement, the city then will get the funds back. So it's very important that we stay focused. And that was, was the part of this 45th resolution that was voted on last council meeting to now make sure that the funds are allocated properly. And again, take it from individuals, but more so as identifying the needs and the services so that we have this metric of going back to show whether the funds were allocated. And this can be appropriated by individual, by target population. And to be clear, Community Development for those who are need, which is low, moderate income, which majority, or what we have talked about as far as 6.91% of poverty, is a population that's in North Park, West End. So Community Development and CDBG funds are allocated to those specific areas. And next time, if I'm invited, I can go deeper into these areas. But most importantly, to reflect back on what was said, previous city council meeting, North Park is under that area. So CDBG funds and Community Development is for that particular area, that community, because it is an area that CDBG has identified. So hopefully, I kind of cleared some of those things up. And I'll say it again, that MLK did receive $40,000. We are, that was the 45th year. We are currently in the 47th year. So that was in 2019. And MLK did not receive an individual line dedicated to them or provided to them because MLK Inc., sorry, did not apply for CDBG funds that year. That was in March 2019. I wasn't the Community Development Director. But a month after that, I became the Executive Director at MLK Inc. at the center. And we missed the deadline. At that point, James E. Hodge was the acting executive director. So we missed the deadline at that time. And when I say we, I, my capacity was the executive director there, and MLK did not apply. Other organizations did apply, and you will see their individual name there. So we want to like move forward and be very transparent on what happened so that there is clear understanding. So I don't know if there's any questions about that. It's kind of hard without my visuals. I did do a SWOT analysis of how we spend public service funds from CDBG. And you know, I can always talk about it on my Community Talk Wednesdays with, if anybody needs more clarity about that. Any questions?
No questions, Monique. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Joe Fabrizio, Commissioner of Public Works.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? I just want to reiterate, you know, arguably, this is one of the busiest times in my tenure in the city. Basically, I'm going to talk about some projects that are either imminent or are in progress or imminent. First, I just want to go over a couple of things over the weekend. We had our annual stop program on Sunday. It was an absolute huge success. We had 1,344 cars attend the event, and 450 of those were from Long Beach. Just to keep it in perspective, in 2020, we had 532 cars with 400 from Long Beach. And in 2019, we had 866 cars and 370 from Long Beach. So it was a really, really successful event. We also were selling recycling bins in the plaza. We sold 94 recycling bins. It was just a really feel-good day. It was beautiful out. I just want to commend the police department and the sanitation department and the street maintenance department for a job well done. Just to quote Mike Corbett, who I met out in the field that day, you know, it was a well-oiled machine. They just did a fantastic, fantastic job. Another project that we finished up last week, and it was on the council agenda, the last council agenda was the emergency sewer replacement point repair on Park Avenue between New York and Grand. I'm happy to report that that was successfully completed, and it was under budget. The bid called for them to replace 40 linear feet of pipe. In this case, it was exactly 40 linear feet of pipe. The bid was $101,000. It actually came in under the bid. The actual price of the project is $70,000. So it was $31,000 under budget. We're going to be, now that the line is, is functioning again, we're going to be, we have a company that we're going to use to actually clean the line, TV the line, and potentially, if it's a candidate line, that whole 450-foot section. So it was a project that was completed successfully. And our street maintenance department is going to be performing the permanent restoration to the road after it settles, which will be probably in about a month or so. And that'll also save additional money. Some of the projects, again, that are either in progress or imminent, I'm going to go through them real quick. And again, I know you have a long agenda. We have our parking garage rehabilitation. The contractor's call walk construction. If you look from City Hall, you'll see there's a whole bunch of little square openings on a lot. That's basically the areas where they're going to be repairing the sheer connectors, which were apparently severed and blowing out all the joints and seals. And, hello? And...
Commissioner, this is Liz.
Hello.
What, what is in the squares? I'm sorry, I didn't...
Right, well, basically, if you look at the lot, you'll basically see a whole bunch of little square openings. Basically, what they're doing there is they're exposing what's called the shear connectors. And in this case, all those locations where they broke open these small squares is where they were severed. They're actually separated. So you know, there's probably a couple of hundred of them. So those are all being repaired. Basically, they cut them out, they expose them, then they, they close them up, and they put like L brackets underneath to support the garage. And plus, they blow out all the seals, which they've been doing over the last week, and then they fill them back in again. The job's on schedule. It's on budget. It should be done as scheduled in June. Another project that's going on is the Edwards Boulevard reconstruction south of Park Avenue. The contractor is Allen Industries. Anybody who's gone down that sees that they're pouring the concrete curbs and sidewalks and sidewalk ramps on the west side right now. That project is moving along really well. Currently, it's on budget, and it should be done hopefully by mid-June. So it'll be ready for the, you know, the peak of the summer months. The Gosha Drainage Improvements Project. This is also one that we recently voted on at the council meeting. We had the pre-construction meeting today, as a matter of fact, for that project. Again, this is a $6.5 million project. It's Park Avenue between New York and Nevada. Park Avenue, south of Park, in the intersection of Riverside and Pine. Based on the meeting today, I'm going to be getting a schedule, you know, for the, probably within a week or so. Once I get that, I'll forward it to everyone. You know, it's a big project. They have 10 months to complete it. It's supposed to be done by February 2022. There is going to be a lot of disruption to this project. So I just beg everyone to be patient. But it's a great project for the city. And if anybody has any questions about that, they can contact, we'll find them. The lifeguard headquarters, everything's on schedule. It should be done by the end of the month. Right now, we're working internally to make sure we can get the furniture and radios for it. But everything looks good. We should be ready for Memorial Day. The Boyd Street Reconstruction Project started up on April 15th. Thomas Novelli Contracting is installing new eight-inch water main right now. They started the work, as I said, on the 15th. And that job, if everything goes well, should also be done by the end of June. It's a long-awaited project. It's approximately $800,000. We designed this in-house, by the way, using in-house labor and manpower. And it's a project that's been long-awaited. The North Shore Critical Infrastructure Project, this is the $33 million project under a FEMA 404 mitigation program on the waterfront between Monroe and Waterfront Park. Basically, the last hurdle with this is finalizing the agreement with the railroad. And Rich Barrios could probably speak to this. We basically had a great conference call with them about a week ago. We have to finalize the agreement. They have to put it in front of the MTA Board in, in June. And then hopefully, the, the board passes it. And then we can award the project in July, and hopefully, start shortly thereafter. The Gosha North Shore Bulkhead Project, that's also proceeding well. We've, we have about five more street ends to complete in the West End, and that project will be complete. It's scheduled to be done in mid-May. We have the bids due for the City Hall facade rehabilitation on April 22nd. That's a, that's actually this week, this Thursday. That's going to basically be, we have $750,000 allocated in the capital budget to basically rehab the brick around the perimeter of City Hall. On May 27th, we have bids due for covering the open-air basins at the water treatment plant. And finally, we're going to be, I'm finalizing the capital budget right now. I have a meeting internally with the city manager under control tomorrow morning. Once we finalize it, I'll be presenting it at the May 6th city council meeting. And actually, last but not least, we've also been coordinating with Ingo Berman on the utilities for the Super Block. And does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Joe. This is Mike Delory. Please thank Novelli and all of the people that are doing the work. It's nice to get a job done quickly and under budget, as well as everything else you're working on. So I just want to say, you know, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Joe. Next, we have John McNally.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay? City Manager asked me to give a quick COVID update, so I will go through it as quickly as I can. You guys are familiar with most of the stats. And I know we have a tight agenda, as everybody else said tonight. For the week ending this past Sunday, the 18th, there was a seven-day increase of 45 new positive cases within Long Beach. That is a average per day of 6.43 new positive test results or 0.19 per thousand residents a day. That's down about a half of where we are about three weeks ago. So where we had some concerns that we were starting to go up in the wrong direction, we hit the plateau and are slowly going in the right direction, thankfully. Statewide positivity rate is currently at 2.85%. Long Island's just a tick higher than that, at 3.04%. That's Nassau and Suffolk. Nassau County alone is at 2.9%. One of the key metrics the state uses is availability of ICU beds. On Long Island, that's 25%. That's the highest number that I can remember seeing since they started tracking that metric. In terms of vaccines, 1.5 million doses were administered throughout the state last week. That's a total of, since they started administering, 15 million, a little bit more than 15 million throughout the state. A million of those doses have been administered on Long Island, and 647,000 Long Islanders have gone through their complete vaccination regimen. In terms of relaxation of restrictions, restaurants are now at 75%. This week, they were, they extended the curfew from 11:00 PM until midnight. And on April 26th, movie theaters will be able to increase to 30%, 33% occupancy and low-risk indoor/outdoor activities and entertainment. So that's museums, zoos, gardens and the such will be allowed to go up to 50% occupancy. Considering the direction that all of this is moving in, I think there is an inclination in the potter of the administration to go back to live meetings sometime next month. Internally, we just need to work through a few of the logistics to figure out which meeting it's going to be. We know we have budget hearings, working session meetings, and regularly scheduled meetings. So just trying to get it all hammered out so we, we do it and we're able to do it right when we do do it. But we can all look forward to that little bit of resumption of semi-normalcy next month. Last but not least, what there are no updates on as of yet are restrictions for beaches. The state has not issued any updated guidance on that. So last summer's guidance is still in play until they do give us some updated guidance, and we are at 50% capacity. So until we get updated information from the governor's office or the state writ large, we are still at a 50% capacity. And that's really my report on COVID. Any questions?
Very much. Any questions, anyone? All right, Mr. Brand, Commissioner of Public, Commissioner of Recreation.
Good evening, everybody. Just a quick update. City Manager asked me to provide some information as far as the beach park is concerned. Tonight's agenda features a resolution authorizing publication of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances regarding admittance fees to the Ocean Beach Park. Leaving that to itself, I, I want to just make the council and the public aware that the start date for the sale of those passes, as advertised on the city calendar, May 3rd, will probably be delayed a little bit. Not something that we haven't done before. You know, the, my decision with that, or our decision, as, as we spoke about it over the, the last couple of days, was predicated on a few factors. Number one, obviously, I want to wait until a vote takes place and, and the prices are indeed final. Beyond that, allow enough time to put those prices into effect from an operations standpoint, not just for the in-person hard passes, but we also have the, a simultaneous launching of the new electronic beach passes. And I want to make sure that timing allows for us to make sure that this is done once and it's done correctly. Lastly, as, as Mr. McNally just alluded to, and probably most importantly, at least from, from my perspective, as we see COVID numbers steadily decline and the vaccine numbers continue to rise, I think holding out just a little bit longer may help clear up some of the many questions we have about who passes will be available to. Perhaps some guidance from the state is forthcoming. We're confident that it is, and, and much of it will have to do with outdoor capacity restrictions, you know, as, as the summer looms on us. Knowing as much as we can before the sale of passes begins obviously provides us with all the ammunition we need to answer the public as to whether or not passes will be limited to just residents, or we can finally appease what has been a very patient group of non-resident seasonal pass purchasers. You know, the beach is a big business, but it's like a business, you know, any other business in this city. In order to maintain and operate it, we need the help of, of our visitors from both near and far. Myself, my staff, Chief Gillespie and our lifeguards, and Tom Kaner and all the beach maintenance boys will be very busy over the next month or so. But I can assure you, we're in contact with each other every day, and your beach will be ready come Memorial Day weekend. One other quick update. We met yesterday with the Long Island Railroad in discussion about the beach getaway package. We've eliminated the possibility of having it live for Memorial Day weekend and, and the preseason as a whole, for that matter. Efforts will continue for perhaps a July 1 start. You know, again, should guidance come our way that we no longer need to restrict capacity, or given what we learned last summer, that we must limit capacity on the weekends... or given what we learned last summer, that we must limit capacity on the weekends, and then maybe perhaps offering a Monday-through-Friday-only getaway package could be customized on their end, which would help us out with revenue as well. One final note, I had a conversation just as recently as this evening with the city manager regarding summer camps. It's been a popular question that people have brought up. Summer camps are happening this year. The application is just about final. Some minor tweaks to some editing there. And I think maybe even by week's end, the summer camp application will be available. And that's my report. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right. Thank you. Our last speaker under the manager's report will be Ina Resnick, the comptroller.
Good evening. So I really lived my last couple of weeks, if not more than that, in the world of the upcoming fiscal year 2022 budget that is to be posted on the city website any minute now. And I think that I'd like to say thank you to Donna, who supported me through this process. Also, thank you to all the departmental managers who work closely on this process with me, who really understood the very serious financial situation of the city. And through the very thoughtful and methodical process, I think that we came with the best balanced budget scenario that we could have compiled. There was additional staff added this year where all the requested budgets that were compiled into the city budget were shared with the city departmental managers. And it gave them an opportunity to review it and not to be surprised once the budget is published. And I hope that it will be deemed that this budget is the best balanced budget that we could have come up with. We continue monitoring city expenses for fiscal year 2021. Our spending committee meets every week, and all the expenses have to be essential in order to be processed by the city purchasing and city controllers' offices. And that contributes to better control and the reduction in departmental expenses. That's basically it for now. I'm sure that I'm going to be talking again once the topic of the beach passes prices will come up during this meeting agenda. I'm sure that I will be giving this podium once again, but I'm done for now.
Ina, the beach pass conversation tonight is not a conversation, it's just a notice for publication.
Okay.
Yes, so there's no discussion there, it's just for publication. And I think Councilwoman Tristan wanted to add something to that. So is it the council's pleasure for her to discuss what she would normally discuss prior to the hearing? Or how would you all like that to happen? I think that because we have so many people on tonight, that might be one of the topics outside of the restructuring that people are concerned about, the beach fees.
Donna, should I cover a little bit of that? And how the decision to increase the prices, how it was informed? Should that be covered now, or?
I would cover it now because we're going to post the budget tonight. That way that people will have an understanding of how those numbers were arrived.
Okay. So Dave, if you could please, if you don't mind, and share on the screen now the document that I sent to you earlier?
One second, I'm pulling it up now.
Okay. So I hope that this table can be seen by who is looking at their screens. So what this represents, and I shared some variances of this schedule at prior meetings. What's different here is that the 2022 preliminary budget numbers for the revenues have changed, and they represent the revenues that went to speak in the budget for 2020. I'd like to make sure that it's very clear that when we're talking about prices for the beach passes, that it was not just informed, that we did not arrive at the individual prices by figuring out how much we need to raise for the budget. Actually, this analysis started maybe half a year ago, maybe as long as the prior beach season, beach season 2020 had ended and all the expenses were accounted for. And we started to look at the beach park and trying to figure out if, and trying to look out if what we collect in terms of revenues covers what we spend in expenses. So there are four distinct categories of expenses. And there are lifeguards, you can have a beach open without the lifeguards. It's a beach park, what we call the beach park, but that's a department that manages the sales of the tickets and also checking the ticket holders at the beach, at the boardwork, at the entrances to the beach. And beach maintenance, that's a department that makes sure that beaches are clean, that beaches are beautiful for the residents and non-residents to use. And then there are special officers, that special officers that work with the police department, and they ensure compliance with the various rules and regulations that the city has. So in total, our projected 2022 budget for these four categories, including fringes, is about $5.6 million. And based on the 2020 revenue actual, we only collected $3.9 million. In 2019, pre-COVID, we only collected $4.3 million. So it's clear that whatever we are getting as a revenue for the beach park is not covering expenses. And what does that mean, really, that it's not covering the expenses? It means that it's subsidized by other categories of revenue. So it's probably subsidized by the property taxes. And it's appropriate, in my opinion, to bring the revenue of the beach park to have it close to whatever the expenses are. So it's a little bit complicated this year for a couple of reasons because this revenue depends not only on the prices, but also on the amount of tickets sold. And the amount of tickets sold right now. Dave, you're playing with my David. Yeah, so it's not just the price. Sure, sure. Thank you. I understand what you're doing. I appreciate it. So it's the number of tickets sold. And then the number of tickets sold, obviously, now depends on what the capacity will be. And if the capacity is at 50%, obviously, to cover the beach expenses, we have to raise those prices substantially. If we assume that it's going to go to 100% of 2019 levels, then still needs to be raised, but not as much as not as much as in a scenario where we're only at 50% capacity. So that's basically, that kind of analysis, that's what had informed us about the need to change the prices. And then a very careful review of each category of the capacity, of how each category contributes to the revenue had informed us of the prices that we are proposing. So Dave, do you mind moving it to the next slide? Okay, so what you see here is a bit different than what you will see later through the hearing because between the time that the proposal of the prices for the hearing was put together on an agenda and what was later determined as the capacity that would be available for us this year. So these numbers are a little different. But I just want to bring your attention to the first row that says price increase scenario five. And I left it here, you don't see any other scenarios. But this is actually, we went through many different iterations of this, trying to figure out how to figure out how to have a beach park to be self-sustained and to have a revenue that we derive from the beach park passes, have it cover the expenses. And again, if it's not covering, that means it's covered by some other revenue. And some other revenues, more likely than not, necessitates the increase in the property taxes. So next couple of slides are just for informational purposes only, Dave. If you can move it to the next slide. And this slide shows the composition of the number of passes sold. So in 2019, 67% of passes sold were for non-resident daily passes. And then only 9% were for the resident family, and 14% were for the railroad. But obviously, all these passes, they are not, they're not letting the same number of people, right? So non-resident daily sold, they're individual passes, while resident family is the pass that covers a family. So it's not one-to-one. This does not represent the number of people that are admitted on the beach. Next slide, Dave. So this one is actually dollars. So it shows where the revenues came from in 2019. About half of it, this revenue came from non-resident daily passes sold. And about 30% came from the resident family, we're talking about the dollars, and 8% from the railroads. Next slide. This is 2020. And as you see, the combination of the red and, of the orange and green is very different. That's where already in a COVID, in the COVID world, when the capacity was limited to 50%, now just the number of passes sold, again, non-resident daily sold are at 65%. The resident family is at 21%. And there was basically no sales to the Long Island Railroad. Those categories that had close to the 0% contribution to this whole scenario, I did not even include it in a call-out, so they're not relevant here. Dave, next slide. And this next slide shows the total beach park revenue per category. And it shows that in 2020, residents covered about 55% of the total beach revenue in dollars, and the non-residents only 36%. And that's due to the fact that their attendance was limited on the weekends especially. So that's basically where we're at. Once again, a lot of thought and a lot of analysis was given to this. It's not, we all understand that the beach passes and the prices setting is quite an intricate issue here at the city. So we considered that for very long and hard. And what you will see and what you saw in the previous slides is the result of that analysis. And that's basically where I'm at.
All right. Thank you, Ina. Just so that everybody knows, there are some changes from what we put, I believe, in the agenda to that. All of the slides will be posted into our transparency portal tomorrow. And so that people can look at all of the slides. And if you have any questions, feel free to email myself or Ina prior to the hearing. Thank you. Did you have a question, Mike? I see your head moving.
No, I think that was great, Donna, following it. And thank you, Ina, for that. It's visual, in the colors, I'm sure it was a lot of work. And thank you for having the ability to put it on the transparency portal so, you know, people can digest it, look it over. But I, thank you.
Thanks. Liz, did you have a question for Councilman Tristan?
It's more of a request than a question.
Yes.
If we can just take the opportunity to, there are going to be a number of families, perhaps, that will not be able to afford beach passes this year because of the pandemic. If we could look into, I don't like the word subsidized, but if we could look into something that could help our families and our residents, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, will do. At that, that concludes the city manager's report.
Okay, thank you. And then why don't we move on to the public hearings, Dave? Oh, wait, wait, wait. Liz has got her hand up again.
Because we have a lot, and I just want to make sure this information gets out to everyone. I have been in touch with the town of Hempstead and Donald Clavon. And the Vaxmobil, as they call it, will be at St. Mary's this Thursday, the 22nd, from 10:00 to 4:00. You must have an appointment. And the number is 516-812-3678. And I'd also like to thank Denise Ford and Missy Miller, along with our administration and the members of city council in our collaborative efforts with the town of Hempstead. Thank you.
Okay. So with that, then let's move on to the public hearings, Dave.
Okay, our first public hearing tonight is an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding offenses miscellaneous.
All right, I'm assuming uh Mr. Berrios is going to speak on that.
That would be correct. Uh good evening, everyone. Um so as you know, Long Beach has a social host ordinance on the books already. One of the first, um I guess Long Beach was the first to actually pass this in the county. Those who don't know, it makes it a a violation for underage individuals to congregate and and use illicit substances who are underage or otherwise, you know, unallowed to do it. Uh this particular ordinance or this uh this amendment basically introduces a a kind of codification of a definition of everything included. So under the definitions portions of this ordinance, drug is um is defined as any substance listed in the public health law. Um so this amendment essentially embeds the definition of marijuana. Just in case somewhere down the line, it's reclassified or removed as a scheduled drug. Um again, this is basically just codifying it, embedding the definition. Doesn't really change anything in the grand scheme of things, aside from making sure, just in case, that marijuana is reclassified or otherwise moved from the public health law, that this definition stands. That'll take any questions.
Rich, could you just um give a thirty-seven synop- thirty-second synopsis of what the social host law is intended to do?
So what it's intended to do um from its inception was to kind of hold hold adults who know or should have known that children were congregating and, you know, getting drunk in a house or holding these illicit social host parties uh to hold the adults, the responsible adults accountable for that kind of behavior. That's 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 basically the long and short of it. The maximum fine on it's a thousand dollars. Um fine range depending on the circumstances of the case, the severity of, I guess, the party that's broken up, because obviously we issue these types of summonses and citations when the police are called to the houses. So it's it's essentially the long and short of it, John.
All right, thanks. Um are there any questions from the council members? All right, seeing none, Dave. Who do we got from the public?
I have Roy Lester.
Okay.
Go ahead, Roy.
He's still muted, Roy.
Roy, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Better.
Yep, there you go.
Okay, um just a quick question. This social host is very similar to what Nassau put in, but we, as I understand, we have a a lesser offense for this same thing, so as not to stain a ch- a child for life. Is that correct?
Um if I understand your question, Mr. Lester, so I guess this is process in the court. So our office prosecutes city court violations. Um in the event if uh, let's assume for a moment that we have a responsible adult, let's say it's a someone who's about twenty-one years of age, who's at this party with a bunch of other underage children, that person gets the ticket. Under certain circumstances, Mr. Lester, uh the our office can offer a plea bargain of sorts where it's reduced to something that's that doesn't appear on their record, or something like this would appear on their record. So depending on a on the case and the severity of the circumstances, we've extended lesser offenses um as an option. Depends.
As opposed to Nassau. Okay, that that sounds good. It sounds good. I just wanted to make sure I had it right. Thank you, Rich.
No problem.
All right, thanks, Roy. Uh who's next, Dave?
Uh Judy Vining.
Okay. Hi, Judy.
Hi, how are you? Thank you. I think we'll start with thank you. Um because this was just a kind of hole in in our original social host law. Rich, thank you so hard, so much for just being able to shape it the way you did. One correction, um we were the first community in the state of New York to enact a social host law.
Even better.
Yeah, in the year two thousand and six. The Nassau County Law, which is a misdemeanor, not a violation, um was based on our our law, but they wanted to make it a higher crime with room to negotiate. We felt that, for the most part, those who were getting ticketed were eighteen and nineteen and twenty-year-olds. It wasn't necessarily the homeowner. And we didn't want to have that record on somebody's life for the rest of their life, because at nineteen, they had a party. So it was very deliberate to have as a violation. What's also happens is that if it's a young person under twenty-one who's allowed the party to take place on premises under their control, which means, hey, guys, come on over. You know, mom and dad are in the city. After that, if the person is under twenty-one, the courts have been sending them to the Long Beach Where Education Series, which is a three-hour education on alcohol and other drugs, latest information, laws, whatever. We give them information that they may or may not have gotten in school, usually haven't or haven't paid attention to. And the intent really is to just have them know about important things like alcohol poisoning, that you, the nine-one-one law, that you, stuff like that. And um we feel we've done our job. They are not changing their drinking habits because of spending three hours with me or my staff. However, it is a pain in the ass. They have to go to court. They have to come to our office, or now it's we're doing it virtually, and then they have to go back to court normally. Last summer, we did not. We had a a different arrangements. The judges wanted them to write, not email, handwriting and mail, or type and mail, an essay about what they learned. So it was enough that and then we got the essays back, and someday I'll share them with you, because they talked a lot about what they didn't know, what they wish they had known when they were younger, stuff like that. And again, my staff is professional social workers, so they're able to steer this as well as give the information. And it actually has worked out much, much better than in person, because you've got their attention and it's it's flashy and um they seem to absorb absorb the information better. And that's for the social host violations who are um under twenty-one.
That's your time.
Okay.
All right, Judy, thanks. All right, who's next, Dave?
That was all.
That was all. Okay, um so why don't we move on to the next public hearing?
Okay, our second public hearing is a resolution granting waiver of Wall Street parking requirements for premise ten forty-six West Beach Street for a sushi restaurant.
Okay.
If the owner would please raise your hand so I can find you in the list here. Oh, there you are.
Hey, how are you?
Okay.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
Looks like we're going to get ourselves a sushi restaurant. So uh could you just tell us a little bit about the what you're planning to do?
Yeah, uh it's our small space, so we're gonna uh have probably around ten to twelve seats. Most of the business is going to be delivery. I'll take out. And then um for the seats that's inside the restaurant will be for people either, you know, waiting for the order, or it'll be a very small sushi bar with one sushi chef. So people can, you know, enjoy fresh sushi there also. Uh the menu will be super simple, um sushi and ramen, um that's about it. Maybe a couple of appetizer, um but it's going to be very simple stuff.
All right. And just for the edification of the people listening, uh this is the old barber shop on Beach Street in the West End between Florida and Georgia. That's what it was previously. So uh in terms of deliveries, how many do you anticipate getting?
Uh, actually, I would say eight, like twenty to thirty orders?
No, 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 no. I mean, uh deliveries of like supplies to the restaurant and things like that.
Okay, so that's where I'm just waiting two to three times each week and about fifteen minutes maximum each time.
All right. And what what do you uh anticipate your hours will be?
Uh we probably will operate from twelve o'clock, no, um to eight-thirty or nine. Summer may be nine, um you know, winter may be eight-thirty.
Sure, okay. All right, thank you. Uh are there any of the council members have any questions? All right, seeing none. Dave, do we have any from the public?
None from the public.
All right. Uh, thank you, Ms. Yao. Uh Dave, why don't we uh, let's close the hearing, and why don't we vote on this now so uh Ms. Yao could uh get her answer, and she doesn't have to stick around.
Okay, on to the calendar. We're going to call item number three first, which is a resolution granting waiver of Wall Street parking requirements for premise ten forty-six West Beach Street, street floor for a sushi restaurant. Who introduced move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Uh Councilmember Truston.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Just around the corner from me, so I'll be looking forward to it, yes. And welcome to Long Beach.
Thank you so much.
All right, have a good night and good luck.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye. Okay, why don't we move on to the agenda?
On to the regular ca- rest of the regular calendar. Item one is approval of minutes for prior meetings, February sixteenth, March second, and March tenth, twenty twenty-one. Do you have a motion to approve?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Truston.
Yes.
Uh Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Okay, item two is an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding offenses miscellaneous. A hearing has been held on this item already. Item three has already been called and voted on. And item four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for police surgeon and city physician services for the city of Long Beach.
Good evening again. Um Rich Berrios, Deputy Corporation Counsel. So this uh resolution is pretty self-explanatory. Uh we'd like to appoint a new police surgeon and city physician for the city of Long Beach. Little bit of background on Dr. Kugler. Dr. Kugler is currently, I think, on the on the call with us today, so he's available for some questions if the council or the public have any. But um he currently serves as the medical director for the city's uh fire department. He's been doing this since May of twenty sixteen without any compensation. Um he just does it because he wants to do it and be thanking for it. Um as far as um compensation, the annual compensation has to be set by the city council, which is why it's before you guys today. Uh the rate is at thirty-two fifty per month, which adds up to about thirty-nine thousand dollars per year. As a as a city physician, uh a city physician and police surgeon, he um you know, conducts examinations of, obviously, police officers, as well as other uh city employees. That includes fire department personnel if they're injured or if they require examination, and city employees from the CSEA, and if need be, maybe one of the exempts. I can't see a reason why, but he can do it all. As far as Dr. Kugler's background, I did some uh some searching and after my discussions with him, had a had a pretty good background, but he's been practicing medicine for over twenty years. He graduated from the University University of Pittsburgh School of Medicine, uh completed his residency at the North Shore University Hospital in Hassett. Um he currently serves as a department chair of emergency services at Mount Sinai South Nassau. Dr. Kugler, when you're on, if I'm wrong about any of this, you correct me right away. Interesting facts, he served in the United States Navy for nine years in both operational and clinical roles, completed service in ninety-nine with the rank of Lieutenant Commander. Navy medical training began in general surgery at the National Naval Medical Center at Bethesda, and continued in the Naval Aerospace and Operational Medical Institute. Upon discharge, he completed a full residency, which is uh over at North Shore, like I explained. And in twenty thirteen, he was awarded both the prestigious New York State Emergency Medical Services Council's and Nassau County Regional Emergency Medical Services Council Physician of Excellence Award. That is a mouthful, um but pretty impressive. Uh in short, Dr. Kugler is well-regarded in the field. Um he's been nothing but a gentleman in our conversations and negotiations. Um and he's well-regarded by both our fire and police departments. We're excited to have him on board and look forward to working with him with the council's blessing, of course. That's all I've got. Dr. Kugler, anything you'd like to add?
Rich, you did a great. You did a great job. Thank you so much. Those are very kind words. You did some good digging, by the way. Uh it's always nice to hear someone else talk about you than to have to talk about yourself. So it's been a great uh honor to serve uh the city of Long Beach, and I'm looking forward to this uh position as the chief surgeon uh and reporting into Commissioner Walsh. He's a he's a gentleman. Uh and I think uh we're going to have a uh make a great team together. So I look forward to it, and I look forward to continuing to serve the city.
Okay, great. Are there any questions from the council members? All right, seeing none. Dave, do we have any from the public?
No hands raised.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Kugler, and
My pleasure. Thank you.
Let's move on to the next item.
Item five is a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a charitable donation and to enter into a naming rights agreement.
That's me again. Good evening again. Um so as the resolution indicates, we're accepting some money and we're entering into a naming rights agreement. The amount, I guess, just for, you know, just to get it out in the open, it's three hundred thousand dollars in exchange um for a for a naming of the lifeguard pavilion over on Riverside for a period of fifty years. Um the gentleman's name is John A. Carbona. I'm sure everyone would like to know who Mr. Carbona is, and I'm going to tell you about him.
Oh, they're going to talk about.
Yep, it's going to happen. I'm sorry. Um so so this is part of his bio. I kind of did some digging, and uh he was nice enough to share some of the information with me, so uh I'll get straight to it. We'll start from the very beginning. His grandfather was Antonio Carbona of Menfis Italy, Sicily, who came to New York, and apparently directed to Long Beach around nineteen ten. History has it that he had fifty dollars in his pocket when he arrived. Antonio was the first local barber in Long Beach with his shop where I think Los Latinos, the bodega on Park and near Edwards Boulevard now stands. Um I believe it's called the Strand Building. Antonio then moved on to the location that uh Frank the Barber had for years next to the old Westminster Bank on Park and Riverside. This is for the history buffs out there. Antonio married his sweetheart, uh who was named Ninfah, which until this very day was a name I thought only belonged to one of my grandmothers. Um so I'm glad we have that in common. Um their love blessed them with four children. Uh one of those children is Mr. Carbona's father Eugene, affectionately known as Gene. He was born in Long Beach in his home uh in nineteen twenty-nine, not in the hospital, and it wasn't on Black on Black Thursday either, or he was born on Black Thursday, I believe. Uh raised during the Great Depression. Our donor's mother, Maureen, was born in LBMS. She was the daughter of the Long Beach Police Inspector Johnny Madden. Inspector Madden was the first LB officer to go to Quantico, Virginia FBI Academy under J. Edgar Hoover, was trained in police investigation techniques, and then returned to Long Beach and opened the department's first darkroom, among other persons. Patricia Roth is our donor's aunt, and yes, she was born here too. She married into the Roth family, who uh were local home builders and started the Center Mill uh Center Millwork Lumber Yard, which is originally where City Hall is now, but is now over on Long Beach Road by McDonald's, as you all know. Gene, the father, was a standout athlete over in Long Beach High School, went to Scranton University at Jesuit College on a full basketball scholarship. Uh Maureen attended LB High School and went to work for the local Bell Telephone Company, switching station over on National and Park, which, you know, the building still stands. I believe it's the Verizon Building today. Gene was drafted into Korean War, pa- placed on the army basketball team. He traveled around uh playing ball, which is great. He graduated from Brooklyn Law School and returned to Long Beach. In fifty-five, Gene and Maureen married. Gene and then Gene became a police officer with the LBPD. Gene quickly moved through the ranks with his Brooklyn law background. In nineteen sixty-five, city manager, uh the then city manager, I'll give some people points if they can guess his name, uh and police chief Ray Panzer reassigned Gene to manage the Long Beach lifeguards. Our donor, Mr. Carbona, was born in fifty-eight at Long Beach Hospital and was the oldest of three kids. So he attended Long Beach Catholic School, served as an altar boy. I presume it's Saint Ignatius. If that's not correct, then you correct me, Mr. Carbona. And then he went to Long Beach High School where he made the swim team and became co-captain in the senior year. And to his credit, he also successfully dabbled in Long Beach politics when he became student body president of the high school. He, excuse me, he then joined the Long Beach lifeguards in 74 and remained active on the beach as a guard for 15 years. He served with a lot of Long Beach locals naturally, with names like John Scudin, Scott Kimmens, and the list goes on. With Long Beach, John went on to study the sciences at the University of South Florida. He received an undergraduate degree in biology and chemistry. Then the business career started. He began working for Mead Johnson, which was started by one of the founders of Johnson &amp; Johnson. He left there to work in another medical company known as Stryker Corporation. There moved to Dallas, Texas, to eventually take a partnership in a company called Cardio Systems, which he ultimately sold in 1998, enabling him to retire at the ripe old age of 40. Congrats, I want to be like you when I grow up. At the same, at the time of that sale, Cardio Systems had 77 worldwide offices and 1,000 employees working in the medical field. After 15 years of retirement and unfortunately, the death of his mother, Maureen, John co-founded a company in Dallas called Avexis. Through the licensing of the pioneering work of a scientist from Ohio State University, John went about the path of drug development, using genes instead of compounds. The agenda was simple, to cure a disease called SMA, spinal muscular atrophy, a deadly childhood disease. By the time John's birthday rolled around in 2018, Novartis, which as some might know is the second largest pharmaceutical company in the world, acquired the little company and lab he founded for $9 billion. Twelve months later, Zolginsma, the product John was working on, was approved by the FDA for treatment in infants. The takeaway, John clearly has sand in his family tree. Sand comes from Long Beach. In my correspondence with him and discussions, he attributes, he's, he's obviously says he's naturally been extremely fortunate. He attributes that to his success. To the core values he learned here in Long Beach and the school system and the local community, especially working out on the beach. You know, he, he said he's looks forwards to, he's looked forward to establishing a legacy here where kids can kind of look up and see that, you know, see the headquarters and see an example of a local kid making, making a name for himself. And he started, you know, with almost nothing. His grandfather certainly started with nothing and, and here he is. He's on the call. If you have any questions for him, please ask.
All right, do you want to add anything, John?
I think Rich, Rich did a perfect job. I don't think there's anything that I can say tonight that really encapsulates the education or the life lessons that I learned on those beaches of the subsequent 20 years. I think everybody knows that it was 56 years ago as a 70-year-old child when my father took over that job, that I was introduced to the Long Beach lifeguards. And really, I would say that the things that I learned on the beach, taught to me by the elders, are the life lessons that made me the man that I am today. And I'd like to thank a few people. First and foremost, my father Eugene Carbone for making me actually the man that I am today. The man that taught me how to swim at the Lafayette Pool, Mr. George Handen. Thank you to Mr. Daly Senior, John Daly Junior, and Tom Daly, who taught me to be an excellent waterman, who are still active at the Long Beach lifeguards now. Weisenberg family, whose contribution to our community is immeasurable and a friendship that goes back to my childhood. I'd like to also thank Lynn Brown for keeping our old man dreams alive. John Scudin and the entire student family for representing Long Beach, not as a small seaside village, but a town of people who really do make a difference. Chief Paul Gillespie for getting me involved in this process and teaching a whole new generation of lifeguards in Long Beach. And a special thanks to my friend Steve Coet and his wife Diane, who took me under their wing as a young kid and treated me with respect and decency when that was really in short supply at that time. And for you current lifeguards, you have a tremendous legacy to uphold and transfer to future generations. Keep your eyes on the water and make a difference if you can. Thank you for everybody that's worked with me over the past couple of years to make this sort of a dream of mine and sort of a, the closing of the loop, so to speak.
All right, thanks, John. Do we have any questions from any of the council members?
Just, thank you very much, John and your family. Looking forward to seeing you in person.
Thanks, Michael. Thank you very much, Mike. Job well done.
All right, any other questions or comments from the council? All right, seeing none. Dave, do we have any from the public?
Yes, Patrick Gallagher.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Gallagher.
Hi, Pat. You're muted, Pat.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is, this is Pat Gallagher, the president of the Lifeguard Alumni Association. An 800-strong organization with over 300 people living in Long Beach. And we are very proud of John Carbone and his decision to support the, the, the new headquarters at, on Long Beach Road, Edwards Boulevard area. It's really wonderful. I was a captain on the Gene Carbone and he was one of the most wonderful gentlemen in the world. John, your father was, and still is a wonderful individual. God bless. We, we wanted to say thank you to the city council for endorsing this and the Public Works Department for putting together the, the new headquarters and the city council for endorsing it. We, we are strong believers in lifeguards for life. And I think that this is part of what John Carbone and his father Gene Carbone have stood for. I would, I would like to make one comment that if you want to know more about the Long Beach Patrol, you can go on the YouTube and go to Long Beach Patrol 2020 and see a wonderful story about the Long Beach Patrol and its history. So we are thankful and God bless that we have this opportunity to finally have a headquarters after eight years of dealing with no headquarters. And this is a great moment for us. So thank you to the Carbone family for their, their efforts.
Thank you, Patrick. That means a lot to me. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Pat. Anyone else, Dave?
Nope, that was it.
Okay. So we don't, again, have to keep Mr. Carbone around to go through the whole agenda. Why don't we vote on this item now?
Okay, so we want to vote out of order. Item number five is a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a charitable donation and to enter into a naming rights agreement. Who introduced move the adoption of this item?
I would.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Carbone, you and your family.
Councilmember Trustin.
Yes, and thank you very much.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Carbone. You represent the very best of Long Beach. And thank you again for remembering your roots and honoring your family.
President Bendo.
And I will add my sincere thanks as well, and yes.
Okay, item passes.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Carbone.
Thank you all.
All right, you have a wonderful night.
Thank you.
Okay, item six is a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept and execute a grant on behalf of the City of Long Beach from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation.
Okay, who are we hearing from? Joe or?
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you, Joe.
Yes, this program is called the Municipal Waste Reduction and Recycling Program. It's really a great program. They're basically, you know, you, you send in the pre-application. You get essentially put on a list and when your number comes up, which ours did, you're eligible for funding. It basically relates to anything related to recycling and reuse. In this case, the great thing about this program is you could actually use it for purchases that you've already made. In this case, we're going to use the two vehicles that we purchased, which was two hail, hile, I should say, split-body pack of trucks that we use for recycling. So again, it's a 50% match for this, so we're going to be able to, you know, since we already purchased the trucks, it's a no-brainer, we'll be able to get 50% back on the purchases of those trucks. So it's a great program. And that's about it.
Okay. Any questions from the council members? All right, seeing none. Dave, any from the public?
Roy Lester.
Okay.
Hi, John.
Hi.
John, when Tommy was talking a little while ago about the truck that almost caught on fire, he was talking about how the truck was a $270,000 truck. And these trucks are $180,000. What's the difference, the $90,000 difference between the trucks and, how come we can't use the cheaper ones?
I'll have to ask Joe to answer that.
Yeah, I'll have to get back to you on that. I'll have to confirm the prices of the trucks. Quite honestly, I'm not sure which specific truck caught on fire and I'm not sure exactly which specific truck is listed in the resolution here. I'd have to compare the two, so we can get back to you on that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anyone else, Dave?
Nope, that was all.
Okay, let's move on to the next item.
Item seven is a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept and execute a grant on behalf of the City of Long Beach and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and to amend the budget.
All right, is this Joe again or?
Yes.
Just bear with me for one second, I apologize. This, this was like another grant essentially under the Municipal Waste Reduction and Recycling Program. And the match is $19,655, I believe. So again, this is a great program, the Municipal Waste Reduction and Recycling Program. It's a NYSDC-run program. That's again, pretty much straightforward. There should be, I don't think there's any issue here. Great program. I would suggest moving forward with it.
All right. Any questions from any of the council members? Got Mr. McNally.
Yeah, I would just, two commendations on this. In no particular order, but Tyler Huffman, who is one of our part-time workers who really coordinates a lot of the grants, is responsible for doing the grunt work on both item six and item seven on that, so you know, worth recognizing him. And then obviously Senator Kaminsky is the chair of the Senate's Environmental Conservation Committee. And played no small part in ushering these grants through, so thanks to him as well.
Okay, good to note that. Any other comments or questions? Right, Dave, what about from the public?
Roy Lester.
Okay.
Go ahead, Roy.
Okay, um, listen, I love grants, but the point is that the city's still paying almost $20,000. And if I understand correctly, that's just to tell people, increase public education about recycling. So that's $40,000 to tell people about recycling. Don't, don't we think that the people know about it already?
Education, education of our recycling program is, I actually can't stress enough how important that is to make people aware, you know, our numbers are quite honestly, are fairly low when it comes to percentage recycled. They're usually in the 10% to 12% range. I would actually say the opposite is true. We actually need to, you know, get out there more, encourage people to recycle. You know, to promote the program. I'm a big advocate of that, so you know, I kind of disagree with you on that, to be the truth. I would, I really think we, you know, you can't, we should do more mailings than we do now. We should do more outreach than we do now. More public, you'll get more public input, do more presentations when COVID is behind us. That's just my thoughts on it.
Okay, I just think $40,000 is a lot of money, but all right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Well, Roy, I mean, Roy, you traditionally have been a huge advocate for recycling.
I, I really am, a huge advocate.
So I would.
But I think everybody knows about it already.
Well, to Joe's point, you know, we don't do real great at it here in Long Beach. So if we could, if, to, to your point earlier, if we could, that you said at previous meetings, if we could do it better and, and recycle rather than dispose, which is cheaper, in the end, we, we may save more.
Yeah, but John, is there any data whatsoever to correlate in more mailings that we send out with more recycling?
Well, since we haven't done it, no.
Yeah, I've never seen any. That's why I just don't.
Well, to me, we haven't done it, so.
Without the data. All right.
All right.
And it's, it's also probably worth noting that this is an up to. So if the city doesn't utilize the full amount, it's not necessarily penalized, but they will match us up to a certain amount. If we're under, it's under, up to, up to.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thanks, John. I was going to mention that too. It's up to the amount. So Roy, if we don't use the whole $40,000, the city doesn't pay out 20.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else, Dave?
Leah Tozer.
Okay.
Hi, I just want to say I think that the grants is actually great. And for the amount of people who are confused about the recycling and what they actually have to do in regards to paper and cardboard and plastic, it's forcing more people to actually throw things in the regular garbage. So I think it's great and if it could be more, it should be more.
Okay, great. Well, that's what we're hoping to do. We got to get people more aware, so we stop sending as much stuff to the landfills.
On that, I say thank you, Leah, for your, your comment.
Well, it's true. I mean, you know, we have to worry about the environment and a lot of people are confused. And we, you know, I think it's great to actually get the word out. More communication is better. And when people, I mean, you know, you see it on like a lot of the groups. People don't know when they're doing it and if things like pile up and they don't get an extra recycling bin, they're just going to throw it out. And that is not what we want to be doing. So you know, anything that's a grant that you can match to get education out for something that important is absolutely huge, so.
Great. Okay. Thanks, Leah. Anyone else, Dave?
Yes, Daniel Schaefer.
Okay.
Or Schaffer.
Good evening, gentlemen. It's Daniel Schaefer.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening. Yeah, to that point, I do think the, the communication with the new recycling program is definitely a good thing. I guess my one comment maybe going forward that we could maybe try to achieve would be a standardized garbage pail and standardized recycling pails, which I know we've, we've already somewhat achieved. Ones that are possibly a little bit more weighted. And maybe something in some way, and I know this is a long shot, but to standardized garbage pails that are a little bit sturdier so that we don't have garbage and recyclables blowing around our community, which is a big problem. Our sanitation guys work very hard, but they can't be expected to be picking up blowing trash down the road. And I think a standardized heavier pail might be something that we could strive for. And if the homeowner even had to spare the expense when they went out to purchase a new can, maybe there was a, be a small match in a, in a tax refund for half of the cost of a new garbage pail if we went to a larger, more sturdy pail. Just a thought, but again, all work towards better recycling and garbage management is great. Thank you.
Okay, great. And just in case you weren't aware, Mr. Schaefer, the city's been selling over the last week or so, new recycling pails that are pretty heavy-duty pails and they're only $15. And they're still available, so they're pretty beefy. They, they, it looks like they'll take a pretty good beating.
Terrific. You know what? Back to the point of education that I was not aware of. So there you go.
Yeah, yeah. And, and we've been selling quite a few of them, so.
Is that, is that the standard round blue pail with the, the very nice lockable lid with the Long Beach logo on it?
Except they're green, they're green now.
Okay, great. Okay, so is that something new? Fantastic. Thank you.
All right, great. All right, anyone else, Dave?
Eileen Heshen.
Okay. Hi, Eileen.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to say for the $40,000, I hope that the education will not include mailers because mailers go right into the recycling bin. So maybe there's another way to educate people. That's all.
Good, good point. Good point. We'll, we'll have John McNally go up and. Good, good point. Good point. We'll, we'll have John McNally go up and down the street with a sandwich board on him or something. So, uh, all right, thanks, Eileen. Anyone else, Dave?
That was all.
Okay, let's move on to the next item.
Okay, item number eight is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with the County of Nassau for the providing of the review of tax grievances for the 2022-23 tax year.
All right, I think we have an amendment for this one.
Yes.
I believe we are changing, uh, the final whereas clause or proposing, we change the final whereas clause to say, whereas pursuant to said agreement, compensation for the services provided shall be received by either of the parties as they perform services under the agreement at a rate of $95 per residential tax grievance and at a rate of $250 per hour with a maximum of 55 hours for the review, analysis, and conferencing of commercial tax grievances.
Do I have a second?
I will.
All right. And just for clarity, before we move on, what that's doing, it's just cleaning up the language a little bit. There was a little confusion in the language about how the hours were, uh, split up. So this is just cleaning up the, uh, the language a little bit to make it clearer.
Voting on the motion, Councilmember Delory.
I couldn't hear the, the change, the commercial conferencing. Was it something? I couldn't hear.
Uh, you want me to read it again quick?
No, just the last analysis of.
Uh, buh, 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 oh, okay. With, uh, $250 per hour, with a maximum of 55 hours for the review, analysis, analysis, and conferencing of commercial tax grievances.
Yes, thank you, President Bendo. Um, I vote yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, uh, do we have any, uh, well, I guess, uh, before we do that. Yeah, Ray Flammer on, there he is.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, this will be the, good evening, council. Uh, this is the second year in a row that Nassau County has reached out for us to provide, uh, tax grievance work for the conflicted cases such as the employee of the Department of Assessment and assessment commission of county attorney's office who deals with tax grievances and tax statutory work. While we do the work for them, so to remove conflict, and if we were to have a conflict case that the city councilperson or the city manager or someone in my office would file a grievance, that would be handled by the county, uh, and any of our relatives as well. Uh, the current contract, we're midway through. We put about 64 hours in. Uh, we've been reimbursed about $17,000 and it only cost the city about $4,000. Uh, so it's a benefit to the city to have this agreement. It hasn't impacted our daily work. Uh, some of the work has been performed by the previous assessor, Peggy Fraser, who is a part-timer and incurred a couple hours of overtime. Uh, but most of the work, well, after the initial analysis, is a few minutes here and there with phone calls and emails. And most of the property is going to be the same next year that we added along this year. Uh, it's the same employees of the county. Uh, sometimes they'll change if they purchase new property or if they hire new employees. Um, any questions?
All right, any questions for Ray? All right, seeing none. Dave, do we have any from the public?
Roy Lester. Go ahead, Roy.
Okay.
All right, we did this last year. How much did we have to pay the county and how much did they have to pay us?
Uh, we paid them nothing. They paid us so far exactly $16,845.
Wow, good one. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Sorry, I was muted. Anyone else, Dave?
Nope, that was all.
Okay, let's move on to the next item.
Okay. Item nine is a resolution authorizing publication of the general summary of the capital improvement program for the next five years and authorizing publication of the general summary of the proposed budget for year July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, and notice of public hearings thereon. This item is for publication only. The budget hearings will take place May 4th and May 11th at 7:00 PM. And the capital improvement plan hearing will take place May 6th at 7:00 PM. Item 10 is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding licenses and business regulations, building code, electrical code, and plumbing code. This item is for publication only. A hearing will be held May 4th at 7:00 PM. Item 11 is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding the Ocean Beach Park. This item is for publication only. The hearing for this will be held on May 4th at 7:00 PM. And I believe we have a, uh, an amendment to this item.
Uh, I believe we do have an amendment. Uh, we are kind of doing a, uh, on page two, I guess we're doing a whole sheet replacement, uh, which, uh, uh, is posted on the city website with the agenda. So, um, it's there for everyone to see. It's, uh, again, just, uh, cleaning up, uh, uh, some, uh, some formatting issues.
So do I, do I have a second to adopt the amended item?
Uh, yes, I'll second.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Abstain.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
That's publication, sorry.
Yep.
Um, okay. Item 12 is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application to waive off-street parking requirements for premise 229 East Park Avenue for outdoor dining area for the neighboring health food and smoothie store. This item is for publication only. A hearing will be held May 4th at 7:00 PM. Item 13 is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application to waive off-street parking requirements for premise 891B West Beach Street, street floor for an ice cream shop. This item is for publication only. A hearing will be held May 4th at 7:00 PM. And finally, item 14 is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application to waive off-street parking requirements for premise 935 West Beach Street, street floor for a psychic and mediation crystals and candle store. This item is for publication only. A hearing will be held May 4th at 7:00 PM. Back for the voting. Okay, start with item number two is a ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding offenses miscellaneous. Who introduces move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will. I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item three has already been voted on. Item four is resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for police surgeon and city physician services for the city of Long Beach. Who introduces move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Uh, yes, and thank you, Dr. Kugler.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Kugler.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes, thank you, doctor.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item five has already been voted on. Item six is a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept and execute a grant on behalf of the city of Long Beach from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. Who introduces move the adoption of this item?
Ball.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item seven is a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept and execute a grant on behalf of the city of Long Beach from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and to amend the budget. Who introduces move the adoption of this item?
I will.
I will.
Sorry, who got that?
Liz.
Liz. Second?
I will.
Okay. Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes, and again, I'd like to thank Tyler and the staff at DEW and Senator Kaminsky's office as well, and everyone who worked on to make this happen.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item eight is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a, excuse me, intermunicipal agreement with the County of Nassau for the providing of the review of tax grievances for the 2022-23 tax year. Who introduces move the adoption of this item as amended?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Uh, yes, and thank you, Ray.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Uh, Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item nine is a resolution authorizing publication of the general summary of the capital improvement program for the next five years and authorizing publication of the general summary of the proposed budget for the year July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, and notice of public hearings thereon. Who introduces move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Looking forward to it, yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
Yes.
And President Bendo.
Yes.
Okay, item 10 is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding licenses and business regulations, building code, electrical and plumbing code. Who introduces move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item 11 is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Long Beach regarding Ocean Beach Park. Who introduces move the adoption of this item as amended?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Abstain.
President Bendo.
Abstain.
Okay, item 12 is a resolution authorizing publication of notice of public hearing of an application to waive off-street parking requirements for premise 229 East Park Avenue for an outdoor dining area for the neighboring health food smoothie store. Who introduces move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item 13 is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application to waive off-street parking requirements for premise 891B West Beach Street for an ice cream shop. Who introduces move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
And finally, item 14 is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application to waive off-street parking requirements for premise 935 West Beach Street for a psychic and mediation crystals and candies, uh, candles store. Who introduces move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Who will make a motion to close the meeting?
I will.
Thank you. Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, and, uh, on to good and welfare. Um, I think most people know the drill, but three minutes of time. And, uh, who's up first, Dave?
First up is going to be Roy Lester.
Okay.
Go ahead, Roy.
All right, I, I have three questions and I guess I better, uh, bring them all out right away before I get cut off. But the first one, and I guess Donna, um, you put out a, a nice, well, did you guys catch any of that? No. Hello?
Catch any of what?
No, all right, I was muted. I was talking and I was muted. All right. Um, yeah, there, I have three questions and I guess I will ask them all three, uh, one after another so that I don't get cut off. Um, the first one is on the debt dash, and I guess, um, you know, this is addressed to Donna. Uh, it was nice that you put it up there. Um, you know, it's, it's kind of helps with the transparency, but in this particular case, it's very confusing. Because on one hand, there's a letter that says we're 460,000, 60 million in debt. And, and then on the indebtedness highlights, it has net debt of only 104 million dollars and our debt margin of only 26.53% of what we're entitled, allowed to have debt. But the whole idea of the restructuring is because we have so much debt. I don't need an answer right now, but maybe if that could be made clearer. Because, you know, I understand a lot of this and I look at this and I'm greatly confused. Um, that's number one. Number two, on April 6th, I had asked about the retained requirement that Inum Bergman was paying the city. Uh, we basically, they had a fee of $425,000, the, uh, but everybody agreed it was closer to 750,000. And we weren't sure exactly why it was that. And I was told someone would get back to me, but I, I haven't gotten an answer on that. I don't know if we have an answer on that. And number three, having to deal with Ena's presentation today. Um, you know, we, she gave us figures of what we're going to collect after the proposed increases, which is 4.42 million dollars from beach charges. Yet we're still spending 5.6 million. That means we're still short 1.2 million dollars even with the increased charges. But then again, I look at the expenses and you have lifeguards at, uh, 2.2 million. And when you look at the budget, you have lifeguards that's under A7186 at 1.36 million. That's almost $900,000 difference. You have the beach park at, uh, 1.094 million. And the beach park under the budget, this year's budget was 632,500, which is almost a $400,000 difference, uh, you know, more. And then your beach maintenance at 2 million. And here, you had, uh, beach maintenance at 2.5, 2.5, almost 6 million in the budget, yet the actual is only, according to this, is only 2 million dollars. So I'm very confused about all of this. Um, it just doesn't seem to make sense.
That's your time, Roy.
Okay, so Roy, this is Donna. Um, I will look at the debt dash and also find out about April 6th, your question to get you those, those answers. And we'll make it clear on the debt dash. So now Ena can answer your question about beach fees.
Well, it's not the beach.
Roy, Roy.
Yes.
Roy, good evening. How are you? Uh, when, um, I, I included on that first slide under the assumptions listing that the expense numbers include fringe benefits. So fringe benefits are budgeted and paid out centrally. And for the, for example, for the full-time employee, the percentage, uh, that, uh, we, um, pay in fringe benefits, that's actually the percentage that we also apply to when we're applying for the reimbursement for various grants. Um, so it's 68.83% for full-timers. For part-timers, it's.
I'm sorry, you know, Ena, 68% of fringe benefits of their salary?
Yes. Yes.
Whoa. Okay, go ahead.
I know. Um, yes, um, so, so for the part-timers, that percentage is thirty six point forty nine percent, and for the overtime, it's thirty seven point fifty two percent. So, uh, these percentages are high. The city's, uh, pension plan contributions are high, uh, like, just, just for example, last year between the pen, two pension plans, city had to contribute seven million dollars in fiscal two thousand and twenty two. It's estimated at eight million dollars. Um, and then obviously, health insurance cost, uh, we have very expensive workers comp insurance, so that's why, um, you will not, um, see the exact, uh, that the, you will not see, um, these numbers that, um, I used, um, on a schedule. They include the fringe benefits. And, um, okay?
But Donna, as I asked before, I wish that when we put these in, we would include the fringes, so that people would know what X, you know, what a particular department is costing, especially when you're talking sixty eight percent on fringes. All right, thank you.
All right, thanks, Roy.
Also, I have, uh, I have an answer for Mr. Lester's question on the water retainage.
Oh, okay.
Um, Mr. Lester, you were correct. The, uh, the amount was three dollars per square foot. I don't know what the exact footage is. Uh, we did take less on this than, than we normally would have been entitled to, but that was in consideration of the work and all the other concessions that were given by Engel Berman. So if you recall, they're doing, uh, that, that entire infrastructure, um, project where they're gonna redo the, uh, they're gonna check the water mains, sewer mains, and make sure that they're up to snuff. They're also gonna be reimbursing us for our city personnel inspections and our city staff. Um, so it was a give and take in that one, in that regard. Hope that answers your question.
Okay. Well, all right.
Did you hear it, Roy?
He, he's there, he's just muted, so, but he got his, he got the answer. So, uh, Dave, uh, who's up next?
Uh, next is Kevin Heller.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Heller.
Gotta unmute, Kevin.
Kevin Heller.
Yep, you're still muted.
Oh, hello?
Hey, uh, okay, now we hear you.
Sorry, I was having some Wi-Fi issues there. Hopefully, we won't, uh, persist. Um, so, good evening. Tonight, I wanted to express an opinion that you've not been operating within the spirit of New York State's open meeting law and arguably not in line with the subjectives of governing in the most transparent manner as possible. In recent city council meetings, I have questioned why documents referenced in agenda items were not made public prior there, too, as required by the law. The answer I've been given is that works and project are not subject to such disclosure, yet section one oh three E of the law is clear. Documents required to be available, as per the Freedom of Information Law, are also required to be made available. Section eighty seven two of the law, uh, allows limited exemptions therefrom. I assume you were claiming to see, for example, when the MOA with firefighters presented in summary. However, it was presented by a union representative and was clearly pre-approved, making this claim disingenuous at best. I can find no such exemption for withholding the settlement agreement with Ingleman Berman discussed in a recent special city council meeting. Further, last week, you incorrectly stated that you can call a special meeting at any time. There's no provision that allows a special meeting to be called because the subject matter would have rendered regularly scheduled meeting too long. Section one oh four of the open meeting law is clear that one week's notice of a meeting must be given, and the exemptions from section one oh four are made clear in section one oh five. While there is nothing in the open meeting law referencing special meetings, there are numerous... There are a number of advisory opinions I have browsed through on the New York Department of State Committee on Open Government's website, supported by significant case law that I would summarize by suggesting that any such meeting can only be convened if subject matter to discuss is in fact an emergency. Otherwise, you are required to conduct business in accordance with section one oh four of the law. Nothing you presented at last week's special meeting convened on short notice would qualify as an emergency. That's my opinion. Now, I also have a question from last week's special meeting. Regarding M three partners and O, and O Melvany and Myers, how did you find them? Were they referred to Long Beach directly, or was there an RFP process that took place?
Hi.
Donna, we'll let you.
Oh, this is Donna Gaden. Um, we did not do an RFP. We did interview, I think, a total of five firms and looked at their credentials, vetted them. Um, once I picked, now, I picked, once I vetted, um, the, uh, M three, I had M three help me vet the other law firms, and according, and I will check since you were according the law, um, because it was a service, we did not have to go through, um, an RFP process, but it wasn't just one firm picked. We, for the, uh, legal, um, it was, we did talk to at least three or four, uh, other firms.
And, and, and were they sort of in the middle of the, of the bids in terms of pricing? Were they the lowest price, or were they selected simply on their, on their merits, or the combination thereof?
They were picked on their merits, um, based on what they have done and what they told us they could do for us, and in the timing of getting this done.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I, I just, you know, on the open meeting law stuff, I would just caution you to, you know, be careful and, um, in, in your interpretation of and application of that law. Thank you.
Okay, okay, I appreciate your comment. Thank you.
Okay, who's next, Dave?
Next is Brian Wells.
Okay, our PBA president.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Walsh made some statements at the last council meeting to the Harold that I need to address. Concerning his new geographic policing plan, it was a complete redeployment of the most basic police services the public receives, and it was not even hinted at in the official reform plan. Its implementation will leave large areas of the city under policed and one neighborhood over policed. While the PBA is not opposed to any area of the city receiving an increase in services, it should not be at the expense of other areas, but in addition to basic patrol coverage. Commissioner Walsh's geographic policing program, coupled with the flurry of recent directives and orders my members have received to enforce minor violations with zero tolerance and intensive enforcement activity, has no support that I have heard from within the department, contrary to his statements at the last meeting. His new plans, procedures, and directives are a clear departure from the reform plan he and the community stakeholders worked on, the public provided feedback on, the council voted on, and was submitted to the state's director of the division budget. The reform plan I read focused on outreach, education, and early intervention through a variety of new approaches that dwelt less on enforcement and more on community involvement. True reform built off of the gains we have made with a well-established policing program of steady posts, community engagement, and equitable coverage that has been in place for over twenty years. Commissioner Walsh, in his comments, would have you believe that community policing is a new idea here in Long Beach. Fact is, we are part of this community. Many of my members were raised in Long Beach and still reside here with their families. Some moved from other towns and chose to make the city their home. Many were educated in Long Beach schools and now send their children to those same schools. We frequent local businesses. Our friends and family are owned by some of them and employed by some of them. We attend local houses worship and volunteer our time coaching a variety of sports. I will agree with one statement Commissioner Walsh made to the Harold. He proudly declared the men and women of our department are longing for twenty-first century police leadership. He's correct. My members are longing for leadership, but not from him. They have quickly come to learn his idea of leadership. He's attempted to instill a culture of fear in our department by berating, cornering, micromanaging, and making other attempts to intimidate my members as if we were a bunch of first-week recruits in a police academy. Fails to recognize we are proud police department, long history and deep roots in this city. My members are not opposed to change, and we know there is always room for improvement, but we are deeply opposed to a leader who submits one plan to the public and the state and then orders us to carry out another, especially when that plan focuses on heavy-handed enforcement and overpolicing some of the very issues that reform is supposed to address. Commissioner Walsh owes the stakeholders this counsel and public an apology. He has lost the trust of my members. Because of this, and in accordance with PBA bylaws, I'm calling a special meeting of the Long Beach PBA on Thursday, April twenty second. The purpose of this meeting will be to hold a vote. No confidence in his ability to lead the Long Beach Police Department. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Wells, this is Donovan Gaten. Um, thank you for your information. Um, I look forward to sitting down, talking to you, and talking to not only yourself, but I will, in fact, look again at the community policing plan, and we will talk to the individuals that was on that committee, uh, on that plan. Um...
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I, I thank you, and I take things very seriously when we talk about a vote of no confidence, because that means that we look at everyone. So I look forward to sitting down, talking to you in the future. Within the next few days, I will start to read that plan right after, uh, you know, right after the next couple of days. So thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Brian. And, uh, who's next, Dave?
Next is, uh, William Nothal.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
On the transparency portal, the I-Star agreement is posted as second agreement. Is there an additional agreement with Engelman and Berman, and if so, where is it posted? On point number three of the posted second agreement, it states that Engelman Berman will pay any fees that are in excess of two point five million dollars. Can you give us an idea on what those fees might include? Will the HVAC fees be part of this, and how will these fees be calculated? I was informed recently that the apprenticeship program was not included in the I-Star agreement. Will the city be repealing the apprenticeship program as listed in section seven dash forty-eight of the code? Thank you.
Mr. Nothal. Yeah, um, so the, the fact that it says second agreement is that there was a, there was an additional agreement in the I-Star litigation itself. Um, I guess in the steps of litigation, it's just a form, it's a formality. Um, so it doesn't, the second agreement doesn't reference any, anything, I guess, clandestine. It's just an actual formality, but it was a previous engagement, a previous stipulation or agreement in that litigation. So this stipulation is distinguished by its number being the second. Um, the other question I heard was the Engel Berman agreement. That agreement is separate, and we already voted on that. We discussed it a little bit at length at the meeting in which the council voted on it. Um, and what did I miss? What was the, what was the other question?
Re- repealing the apprenticeship program, since you're not gonna use it in the I-Star program, in the, uh, Engelman Berman agreement.
Who said we weren't gonna use it?
Tell me you didn't have to use it.
I said I didn't have to include it in the agreement, because it's already in the code. Right.
So my question is, being it's there, are we repealing it, or are we gonna use it somewhere else at a later date?
Well, the code exists as it exists, Mr. Nothal. To think, um, you know, we'll get to that bridge when we cross it, right?
Okay. And the other question was...
Cross that bridge when we get to it. I got my, uh, I got my metaphor tangled.
Uh, the other question was the, uh, HVAC fees, part of the fees that have been included on the, uh, the agreement, and how are the fees gonna be calculated? How are they gonna determine whether it's more than two point five, or it's coming in on the two point five?
Okay, I leave the, I mean, I leave the calculations of the fees to the discretion of the billing department, because that's what they do. Um, I believe, I'm not sure what specific section references the HVAC as I sit here. Um, but there are other fees that are included in that Engel Berman agreement that require them to pay something over the cap. So as you heard before, they're paying a reduced price on the water retainage. Uh, they're performing that work. They're reimbursing our staff, and they are paying other building department fees as set forth in the code. Um, I just don't know where the HVAC one is, as I sit here, so I don't know.
Very good. Thank you, Rich.
No problem.
Can, can we clarify that the name of the developer is Engel Berman, not Engelman Berman?
Engel Berman at the Beach LLC, I believe it is.
Correct, thanks.
Okay, uh, who's next, Dave?
Next is James Hodge.
Okay. There he is.
There you go, James. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, one, I just wanted to say, I think that some things were misquoted a little bit in the beginning when we could talk about community development. I just want to say that the Marlowe King Center has always had a great relationship with the city. Uh, sometimes funds have come directly to the MLK Inc., and sometimes the city has just continued to do what they have done, and that's supporting, uh, the gas and electric, uh, for the building and taking care of the infrastructure, uh, and helping out with different things in the building. But again, you know, a lot of these things we wouldn't have, uh, as an agency if the MLK Inc. wouldn't continuously fight for it, and we're all entitled to do that. West End Fight for Things, uh, that's how John Bendo got to be known very well, you know, as the president of the Western neighbors, standing up, fighting for things in the West End, and so many others from the East End, the Western, Nevada to Maple. You know, one thing is, uh, people came together from all over the country to fight for justice, and that's why, uh, you know, I appreciate the jurors coming together, seeing the evidence, and giving a guilty verdict on all, uh, three accounts. And so, uh, I, I, I thank, uh, for people being able to come together and march all over the world, not just this country, because they saw what took place. So again, I, as I said always, uh, let us continue to allow our budgets to reflect, uh, uh, what we mean in fighting against systematic and institutional, uh, racism. Uh, budgets matter, and, uh, where we, you know, what we do with our dollars, because again, uh, it's institutional racism in policies, budgets, and also, uh, you know, I just want to encourage, I don't know what's going on in the police department, but sometimes when there's always a shakeup, you know, I, I would love to hear some of these things that are so bad, you know, some of these things that are going on. I mean, the public should be able to hear it if it's going on so bad. I mean, I don't know, you know, but, uh, anyhow, uh, I, I, I may feel like we do need to talk more about the, uh, executive order two oh three, but, uh, I would love to hear what's so bad. I thought that there were a lot of good things that I was hearing about Commissioner Walsh. Uh, you know, so I would love to know some of those things that we are saying that are wrong and bad, uh, dive into them a little bit more, because sometimes people just don't like shakeups, you know, uh, and that's that. So again, let us continue to work together. Let us continue to fight for justice together. Some of you have marched with us, and let us continue to, uh, again, uh, work with different organizations to be able to help our city. God bless. Thank you all.
All right, thanks, James. Have a good night. And who's next, Dave?
Kathleen O'Leary.
Hi, Kathleen.
Hello. Um, like James, I would like to speak about, uh, some national issues and then move to the effect that they're having on Long Beach. Um, the three incidents that have really, like, rocked this country, uh, have been the January sixth attack at the Capitol and the seditious attack on democracy, uh, by these white nationalists trying to stop a major demo, democratic procedure. Um, three Capitol police are dead, uh, hundreds of police are injured and maimed. Um, and the whole premise of it was that, uh, there was, President Biden being elected was alive. Um, that presented a clear and present danger at the time, and it still does. Um, the second incident or trend that is really, uh, presents clear and present danger are the mass shootings. Um, we've had fifty of them in the last thirty days, uh, since the slaughter at the nail salons, I believe, in Georgia. Um, and I believe today someone in Long Beach just killed, uh, his boss in Stop and Shop in West Hempstead, so it's getting closer. Again, these are a clear and present danger. Uh, the last national, uh, danger is attacks on Asians. All over the country, Asians are being assaulted and killed. In particular, uh, Asian women are being targeted, and also the elderly. Um, what I see in Long Beach is I see flags on houses and trucks. Um, they have one flag for the former president, and then they have a flag underneath it that says F U C K Biden. Um, I also see bumper stickers that say, this is not a gun-free zone. Um, that's not true. Um, and I haven't seen this, but I think I will see... Um, and I haven't seen this, but I think I will see it soon, uh, hate signs saying, you know, kill all, fill in the blank, either by race or religion. Um, all these things are just continuations of the clear and present danger, uh, presented by the national issues. Um, you know, free speech is limited. You still cannot yell fire in a movie theater. And in my opinion, these, I'm offended by these flags, number one. Uh, not the former president, but the ones that have curses in them. And, um, it scares me to have people driving around with AK-4015 and their license plate numbers. So what I'm asking the city council to do is consider passing an ordinance to crack down on this public cursing on, you know, written form, uh, anything encouraging guns and any hate speech.
Ms. O'Leary, that's your time.
Oh, that's perfect.
Okay. And I'll, and I'll just say, uh, Kathleen, our, our Corporation Council office and our police department have been, uh, let's just say, very busy on that flag issue, uh, because you're not the only one that's, uh, uh, raising an issue about it. And, um, yeah, uh, our police commissioner has, is talking regularly with the one individual in question, trying to talk him off the ledge, so to speak.
You know, it's, sorry, but I also see it on trucks coming into Long Beach. It's not just one individual. There's more, and there will be more, I believe.
Yeah, and it's, unfortunately, it's probably going to get worse, because it's their, they're using it to, and they're using their free speech right to antagonize, um, unfortunately. Um, we've, we've lost the art of civility, unfortunately, um, uh, over the last few years, and, uh, apparently, these people don't think it matters that our children and-
Yeah.
And such can see this stuff. So it, it, it says something about, quite frankly, us as a, as a community, too. Uh, that's kind of, kind of sad.
I did hear one guy in Florida who's doing it. He says he doesn't care about the children, he doesn't care about his neighbors or the religious people, but if the town were to pass an ordinance, he would, he would obey it.
Right. So, and, and like I said, our, our police department and our Corporation Council office are looking at all the options, uh, uh, un, unfortunately, this is protected free speech, so finding ways to deal with it does present challenges without being able to infringe on people's rights.
See, I don't think it's protected free speech, because I feel it encourages violence. It undermines a, um, true and legitimate-
I apologize, Ms. Ms. O'Leary, but you utilized your, your three minutes, Ms. O'Leary. I'm sorry.
Okay, but I, I will just tell you that they, it is, it is being, it is being looked at. This is not something that's being ignored.
Thank you.
Okay. Dave, who's next?
Judy Vining.
Okay, welcome back, Judy.
Well, be back, but thank you so much for plugging that loophole in the social host. Um, our kids are just going to be a little bit more protected. But John, I want to go back to something you said the last time we talked about opting out, and that you said this was probably going to be such a large issue that it would require an own separate meeting. And I agree with you, but I would like to suggest that it's in two stages, because there's so much information on behalf of Long Beach Aware, for example, that we have as a resource to give you, but it can't be done in three, three minutes. So could we possibly have a work session about it, where there's more time for interested parties to present?
Oh, yeah, that, that, that is the idea, not to do it at a, not to do it at a council meeting, but to do it in a work session.
And then-
Where there would be input, and there'd be, you know, get, get all sides to the issue.
It's, you know, exactly. Okay, thanks. I would, that was, the other thing I want to remind everybody, or announce, and I think it's on the, your Facebook page, and I know it's on the police, uh, department's Facebook page and ours, is that this Saturday from 10 to 12, for the very first time, by the way, um, the city of Long Beach, Long Beach Aware, and are taking part in the DEA's National Drug Take Back Day. Um, for some reason, we always do it on the Stop Act Day, and it kind of got lost in the message, but for this year, we're able to do it very visibly in front of, um, City Hall. It's just no questions asked, just drop off all of your unused medications. Um, and it's just a safe thing to do. We have some bags that are called deterra bags, that we can give out if anybody wants, and it just renders inert any, if you have leftover penicillin, and you can't flush it, because, Environmental Protection Agency doesn't want us to do that. This, you put a certain amount of warm water in a bag, you shake it up, you put medicine in, it renders it inert, and you can throw it away. So, anybody, if you see us, we're right in front of City Hall, uh, with the police department, has to have either DEA officer or a police officer with you in order to, to do this. And, um, let's see how many medicine cabinets we can clean out of old stuff.
Okay. All right, thanks, Judy.
You're welcome.
All right, who's next, Dave?
Uh, Melissa Gibson.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Gibson.
Hello, thank you for taking my question. Other than establishing, um, a working group to take a look at the, how the MRTA opt-out program might work in Long Beach, are there any other steps that the council is taking to educate themselves and the community about, uh, the MRTA, especially those aspects of it that take place immediately, such as not being able to use the smell of cannabis as alone as probable cause for search, and also to let people know that, um, uh, it includes expungement of, of certain kinds of records, and, um, and also understanding that until the Office of Cannabis Management is, um, staffed, which was made, um, possible with the MRTA, uh, some of the information that would be needed to really make decisions and to flesh out a working group, but would, would have to wait until some of those regulations are more fleshed out.
Okay, uh, I guess, I don't see, oh, there he is, our police commissioner is still here. Um, I guess you unpacking a lot there, but I would say, as far as the council goes, you know, we've been getting most of our information up to this point from our, from our police commissioner, but, uh, we, we have to really, um, this is not going to be a simple issue to discuss as a community, because there's going to be people on all sides on this issue. Um, so, we really need to, uh, get a lot of the information you are talking about, uh, and probably on our end, I would say probably, uh, like, I, I'll just speak for myself, I haven't had any formal training yet on, uh, what, what's in that, uh, in the legislation and, uh, and how it's going to trickle down to, to us, and then we need to get that. But, uh, Ron, I don't know if you want to add anything?
Oh, I was-
Go, sorry.
I was just going to make a suggestion that Start Smart NY just put out a one-pager that lists exactly in what ways the MRTA affects New York State residents immediately, and the ways that are still to be seen. So it's a nice resource, and I'm happy to send along a link to that to anybody, you know, on the council, if you'd like.
Yeah, please do.
Also, can you send it to the, um, to the city manager, so I could take a look at it?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
All right, anything else, Melissa?
That's it, just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, Dave, and who's next?
That's it.
All right, thanks, everyone, for joining us, and, uh, we will, uh, see you at the next meeting. And everyone, have a good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night all.
Good night, Dave.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, Liz. Good night, Joe.
Good night, Mike.